Get started. All right, we are live. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 5th City Council Meeting. We're streaming live on City Madison YouTube channel. We are also archiving the meeting there. We have a very full agenda tonight, but like in past meetings, we will start by standing, inviting you to recite the Lord's Prayer, followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thou is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Clerk.
Sure. Patrick Tevino.
Here.
Carla Krebs.
Here.
Lucy Tillow.
Here.
Josh Schaefer.
Here.
Joel Storms, absent.
Jim Bartlett.
Here.
Josh Wilber.
Here.
Thank you. Counsel, I've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the Tuesday, July 22nd meeting. If so, we entertain a motion to approve.
I move that the minutes be approved as presented.
A second.
Any discussion? Are you in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, tonight's, consistent with last council meeting, it's about education, and really talking about the future of Madison and what's in store for us as we digest the legislative changes, and then head into the 2026 budget for the city of Madison and beyond. At the last council meeting, we had Gary Reedy, who was our financial advisor with Reedy, Reedy Firm, give us an overview of the legislative changes and the projected financial impact. I think what we presented there was about a $3.3 million loss from property tax revenue over the course of the next five years as Senate Bill 1 is being implemented. We combined that with data relative to the asset management plan for the city of Madison's road inventory, and presented to council and the audience here. You can also look at it on YouTube. The condition of our roads, we have almost 70 roads, and about 54% or so of them were rated poor to fair. And we had given a projection on the economics of what it's going to take to get to average, an average pager rating being six out of a 10. And the estimated cost then was $9 million. And that was part of the data we had presented on why a wheel tax would be important for the city and the community if we were going to continue to invest in our roads. Well, tonight, we'd like to continue with the education of legislative changes as well as planning needs. And I'd like to invite Matt Greller, who is the president for Accelerate Indiana Municipalities AIM. And together, we're going to give a presentation on a couple of things. But I want to give a quick remark as Matt makes his way to the podium. Matt and I have worked very closely together since my time as mayor, and he has worked with many mayors in Madison over the years, but has been an instrumental part in working for communities all across the state of Indiana to be problem solvers, to minimize impact from legislation at the state level that impacts local government. And I can tell you, they provide invaluable service, and Matt has an excellent team. So, Matt, welcome to City Madison Council meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for giving me a few minutes here. Last time I addressed the council here, I didn't need these glasses, I don't think. Good evening, members of the council. Mayor, thanks for inviting me to come down. It's a great honor to be here. Again, I'm Matt Greller with Accelerate Indiana Municipalities AIM, your organization. We obviously work for the 470-plus cities and towns that are members of our organization in the state. I assume most of you are familiar with what we do, but just in case there are not, you are not. It can be divided into some pretty easy buckets. The first of which is, of course, is we advocate, on behalf of cities and towns, at the Indiana General Assembly, so follow hundreds of bills each year to make sure that they are where they need to be, or in the best shape possible, certainly. We also educate, provide a couple hundred opportunities a year for municipal officials and staff to convene on a variety of topics, all impacting municipal government. And then, of course, we allow and provide opportunities for city and town leaders, elected and staff members, to get together with one another, share best practices, what works well in one community could work well in another, those kinds of things. So, again, just really excited to be here tonight. My purpose for tonight is to share a little bit of a statewide perspective on the funding situation impacting cities and towns across the state, and then to address two specific things you have on the agenda this evening, the first being the food and beverage tax, and the second being the wheel tax. So, I'd like to get into those here in just a moment. First off, though, I think rather than go down the path of a long finance discussion, it sounds like you did that at your last meeting, you've got some background materials. I think some of you are flipping through it now, that will show some of the impacts and where we anticipate changes need to be made in future legislative sessions. Of course, you can always go to our website and look at information in great detail, or give us a ring or an email, and we'll get you the information that you need. To say that Senate enrolled Act 1 will cause significant impacts across the state is probably an understatement. We are still trying to understand all of the implications and identify what needs to be addressed in the coming legislative years in order to make this a workable solution. But for purposes of tonight, let's go ahead and get started with the wheel tax. I think you have a very strategic opportunity tonight and in future meetings as it relates to the wheel tax. There has been much debate about the wheel tax at the legislative level and legislative circles. So, let's begin with some of the basics, which I'm sure most of you know at this point. First of all, we were able to get the law changed some number of years ago, to where cities and towns above 5,000 population can adopt their own wheel tax. So, I think you know this now, that's why we're here tonight. This is true, though, even if the county already has one. So, it's my understanding, county does not have one as of yet here. Should they elect to do one in the future, the city of Madison, then would we receive two distributions from the wheel tax, one being the county level, which is applied to all residents in the county, and then the second being at the city level, which, of course, is only those folks that live in the city. If indeed that you do go ahead with this movement, there is currently, and I'll emphasize that, currently no requirement for a local government to have a wheel tax in order to access community crossings, yet. And I want to emphasize that point. There has been a tremendous amount of conversation at the legislature about making that a requirement to access those community crossing dollars that have been really valuable, not only to Madison, but communities across the state. There are no certainties in the legislative process, of course, but I would be shocked in the next couple of years if that mandate did not come down from the legislative session in Indianapolis. So, I think you're being wise and planning ahead and looking at this opportunity, and I put you out in front of a lot of others as we go down this path in years to come. On a very positive note, there were some changes made to the road and street funding at the state level this year, and one of those in particular is a new distribution that is available to cities and towns that will be coming automatically, there's no need to apply in grant-style format or anything of that nature, would come automatically, and it would be distributed based on lane miles and population. Okay? So, this is only available to you, though, if you have a wheel tax in place. So, that's an important distinction. If you have it in place, you get the new distribution. If you don't, you don't get the new distribution. So, by not acting, I think a lot of communities will be behind the curve a little bit, they'll be losing out on money, certainly from the state, money that is being returned into quality projects and infrastructure needs at the local level. I think the wheel tax also ensures that there's an even playing field. We hear this phrase in Indianapolis a lot recently, and it kind of makes my skin crawl just to touch, "skin in the game." We hear that, that the state legislature wants local governments to have skin in the game when it comes to a number of different things. This is no different. Wheel tax does provide, I think, from the state's perspective, a skin in the game, but also locally. Wheel tax will ensure that your residents are paying a fair share, an adequate share, to maintain the roads and streets they use every day. So, whether you're driving a gas-powered vehicle or an electric vehicle, the wheel tax will include all of those things and make certain that infrastructure money is going where it needs to be. Any questions on the wheel tax before I shift gears into the food and beverage? And come back to that at the end, too.
I might just ask that, you know, we're all in a timeframe in order to get this implemented for 2026. We have to have this implement, adopted and implemented at the state level by, by the end of August, essentially. So, are you seeing, you know, a lot of activity across the state with regard to adoption process now?
Yes, I don't have a number in front of me, but anecdotally, it's in the teens, if not much higher than that statewide of communities above 5,000. Now, remember, there are not a lot of communities in Indiana above 5,000, so that's why you might not be seeing a huge number of folks going about it. But yes, almost every community above 5,000 at least has this on their radar and are considering it. Others are going through the same process and a little, about the same place that you are right now, and we'll certainly see that activity pick up in the coming year. And like you said, Mayor, you do have to have this in place by the end of the month in order to start receiving those distributions in January, which is obviously important.
At ICOM last week, Indiana Conference of Mayors, it was frequently discussed amongst our roundtables about the implementation of it, and we were sharing information with some of the other communities to make sure they got connected to the right BMV person in order to do it. But the window really is pretty narrow to have it apply for 2026. If not, you know, you're looking at 2027 and beyond, which is a long time in road years, so to speak.
And you're just getting further behind every year that you don't address those kinds of needs. Shifting gears here just a little bit into the food and beverage tax. First of all, I want to commend you all and the administration for getting some work done in the legislative process. Not every community in the state of Indiana has access to a food and beverage, a local food and beverage tax. Madison is one of, I'd say, just more than a handful of folks that do have access to this opportunity, and it's one that I hope in the near future that all communities in the state will have. But congratulations on getting that part of the process done legislatively here recent months. So, 1% food and beverage tax would mean that visitors to your community are paying their fair share or having skin in the game from their perspective as well, and making sure that infrastructure needs are met, service needs are met, that they use while they're here visiting, visiting the city of Madison. Again, not all Hoosier communities have this opportunity, so this is a unique opportunity for now. We hope it becomes statewide, and we hope that you all take advantage of it. I think some additional justification, Madison is one of my favorite communities in the state, certainly. And you've earned a number of accolades over the years. You know, recently, was it the 2024, you got the Great American Main Street Award, I think the first community in Indiana to receive that in 25 or more years, so that is fantastic news. You were the Indiana Chamber Community of the Year recently. USA Today named you the number one small town in the Midwest. I'm from Nashville, Indiana, so we'd like to take that back away from you at some point in the near future, but a great recognition for the community, certainly. You've generated 25-plus million dollars in reinvestment, you've created 45-plus new businesses in recent times, continue to transform your community into a destination place, not only here in the Midwest, but really worldwide. You're seeing young folks move back to this area because of the work that you're doing here. And I think all those things go along to justify putting in place the food and beverage tax for those folks that visit your community to help pay for the infrastructure needs. That burden, at least in my opinion, should not be placed solely on the residents of Madison as they, those folks come and visit your community and use your services. Would also encourage you to think about why Madison, you know, why should they bear the full cost of supporting the infrastructure when you have such an influx of community visitors each and every year? You know, your Main Street redesign, your police protection, public safety protection, infrastructure work, visitors use those things every single day that they're here, and they should pay for part of, part of that service. I would say that these taxes, particularly the food and beverage tax, ensure that they contribute proportionally and regularly to the community, so that's a positive. You know, you all have consistently been ahead of the curve when it comes to work in cities and towns across the state. You've implemented the Main Street Transformation Project before others around the state even recognized that Main Street was a vital part of the community. You pursued and have pursued and continue to pursue ready funding collectively, regionally, and aggressively, and have done it very, very well. You've won award after award after award. In fact, when I walked in tonight, I saw some AIM awards on the wall, which are, again, a recognition of the work that you all have done here in the city. So, I would again encourage you to lead on this topic, or these topics for the community, and continue to make sure that you are in a place where you continue to excel and provide exceptional service to your residents. I think by strategically considering these things, these tools like you're doing, you'll have access to every available funding tool while maintaining full grant availability, like we talked about at the beginning, should that become a requirement like we think it will on down the road. I think you'll continue to position Madison to attract business, tourists, and investment by ensuring you have diverse revenue streams, to maintain the quality of place that really sets you apart. I would argue the investment that you've made in place has been a leader, if not the leader, in the entire state of Indiana. You don't have to look any further than out these windows to see how that is working. The downtown is vibrant, it's full, your residents are engaged. I think that has been an outstanding couple of traits for the community. Now, I am certainly not here to fear monger, but I would be remiss if I did not tell you, just on my way down here, I talked to two different communities about their concerns of meeting service needs and demands in light of Senate enrolled Act 1. You know, we're looking at a $1.5 billion reduction in property tax revenue to local governments around the state. That is a significant loss of revenue, and comes with it the potential for loss of service. I think by considering these steps and these tools, adopting these tools tonight and in subsequent meetings, you're getting ahead of that curve and will allow Madison to be the community that it has been for so many years. So, I'll stop there. Happy to take any questions.
I might just ask you to comment. Governor Braun was at our ICOM meeting, and I thought it was a pretty honest roundtable that was just us and him, and it didn't seem to be rehearsed. So, maybe give your observations about that and what the 2026 legislative session may focus on.
I think you will see in the 2026 session, more efforts aimed at property tax control. I think you will see efforts aimed at assessment control. I think you will see efforts to consolidate and eliminate various forms of local government that have been discussed for many years now, but I think that, that conversation is probably coming back in earnest in January of '26 as we head into the next legislative session. So, all those things, should any of them become law, will continue to put additional pressure on you as a community and make the adoption of these kinds of things even more critical. You may be one of the first to move out in front on these issues, but I, looking into my crystal ball, I would argue that you will be heralded for those decisions should you make them on down the road.
And the way I look at it is, if we want to keep investing, we know that there is a shift from property taxes to other forms of revenue. It's not the elimination of doing the investments or providing the services, it's a shift of how they're paid for. And I think that we've got enough bandwidth here to figure it out and continue investing, continue providing very valuable essential services, do it fiscally responsibly, without, you know, kicking the can down the road and hoping that, you know, there's something better comes along later.
Yeah, last point I would make would be that on the income tax, you've heard a lot of discussion about how local governments now will be given new income tax authority, particularly at the city and town level that we've never experienced before. While that's a good tool to have, I think, you know, in the, in the quiver, good era to have in the quiver, I'm not sure that it will adequately replace what you're losing so, as a result of property taxes. So, as you're considering these kinds of things, the quicker you can get them done, the quicker you can bend that curve back around and making sure that the community upholds the services that you've all come to expect.
Matt, are you able to stay for the rest of the meeting, or do you have to get back to Indianapolis?
I don't have to do anything. I can do whatever you need.
We'd love if you can stick around, and we do have a great agenda tonight. It's a very full agenda. We're going to have a public hearing in a minute. But any questions for Matt? You were raising your hand.
Yeah. I just actually just wanted to thank you for coming down. So, the lack of questions is due to Bob, and the number of people he's had to speak on this, so thank you very much for coming down and adding to the group.
Not surprised. One of the more thorough marriages you'll find in the state.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Counsel, anything?
Yeah. I got a question.
Okay.
So, Matt, in your opinion, you know, with this change of direction that Governor Governor Braun has brought, and it looks like he's putting more the burden of tax rate hikes on local government, and we're going to take the brunt of having to look at that, which I think is pretty sad of our state government and our governor to do that to us, but that's how I feel. You know, what's your, what's your opinion on that and as he continues to go down this direction?
I think you're seeing this shift happen nationally, too. Other states are looking at full elimination of property taxes and looking at other revenue streams. I think in Indiana, I think the writing is on the wall that we'll be shifting from property taxes to an income tax-based system. I do think it places a different and maybe sometimes slightly unfair burden on individuals to fill, fill the void, if you will. I do worry about individuals, for instance, that are of low income, this would seem to hurt them a little more aggressively. So, again, by looking at tools like you're looking at tonight, you diversify that and you lessen the impact, and the sooner you do it, the further out in front you'll be. So, while it is a difficult thing to have to address and do as a council, I don't think you want to see your community fall behind, and you want to continue to have it be the great place that it is.
Yeah. It just, it just feels like we're in a corner.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I don't like.
Wait till, wait till 2027, Councilman. That's when a lot of pressure will happen in 2027.
I should back up to that, too, just a little bit, as a point, another reason why you might want to consider this sooner than later. Right now, the state cannot tell you how much an income tax in the city of Madison will raise. Your financial analysts can provide some pretty good estimates, but there's no exact number, and that data may not be ready in time for the adoption of the income tax in 2027. So, the property tax reductions are going to continue to happen. Again, if you move down this line of adopting these tools now, you're going to be way ahead of a lot of other communities that wait too long.
Matt, the general sense that I get from the effects of SEA 1, the, there was, there is property tax relief for individual homeowners, because you're going to get different deductions, and I think, I haven't mathed all of them out, but I think that ends up being a bigger number from the majority of homeowners, right? Is that what you guys have seen at AIM?
It's really just going to depend on individual circumstances, community by community. I'm sure that you're, that, was it Reedy, has done an analysis and probably has a good estimate for you all. I think the mayor said, what, three and a half million, as we said earlier.
3.3 over.
At a city level, we have an idea, and we don't know any, we haven't seen any numbers from an average median typical homeowner. Have you seen any numbers like that?
Well, there were some examples, if you just picked one, but the phase-in of the deductions, I mean, you know, in Gary Smith's presentation, we're going to lose a quarter billion dollars of assessed value based upon the phase-ins of the deductions on the 1% and 2% properties, and those are homeowner properties as well as commercial, commercial and farm properties. It's a, and so, think about, take a quarter billion dollars out of what would have been taxed, and that, that's just the beginning. And that, as that gets phased in, it's going to have a very dramatic effect, and it is a shifting from taxpayer on homeowners, on property owners, over, and business and personal property tax, over to incomes and other fees and taxes.
And there are so many nuances in the bill, too. Nobody has a full understanding yet of how the impacts are going to play out. You have things in there, when the income taxes are reset, well, there's currently an income tax or a portion of income tax being used for property tax relief. That goes away. So, what implications does that have on the makeup? Any number of different things like that.
And I'll just add this, in 2027, what's going to make that exercise so hard is what Matt was describing is, we don't have the data. So, this law was passed without the data to understand what the implication is going to be in 2027. Jefferson County and City Madison already has a personal income tax, and it is collected based on our incomes, but it's distributed based upon property tax rates. So, for example, let's say a district rate is $3, and we're, and our city rate is $1, we're getting one-third of whatever they collect in local income tax off of the gross incomes of the employees here. But we don't know what that's going to be in 2027, because they're also changing that methodology. It'll go away from that type of formula to, you're going to get what you collect inside your city, and we don't know what that is. It's a, there's a lot of work to do over the next few years. That's why I'm saying is we're trying to be ahead of this, because rather than having it all hit at once, the impact is going to be felt gradually, but it's going to become more dramatic and compounding as time passes. But I will emphasize, we can figure this out as a community, what type of community we want to be, what level investment we want to make, and what do we, what do we want to defer? We'll have those choices. It's all a choice.
I guess where I was going with that, though, is the, with the deductions for the individual homestead, the 1% homes, most people will see a tax savings of some amount. It might be small, but it's going to be something.
Well, and certainly with the credit that's going to be applied, the $300 credit, everybody should see some reduction, certainly.
And businesses, especially small businesses, are going to see an even bigger percentage-wise deduction. And so, these taxes that we're going to have to do, the wheel tax, the food and beverage, it's going to offset somewhat those property tax savings, but not entirely, whether at an individual level or a city level. So, for individuals, they, at the end of the day, most individuals, and businesses especially, will be paying less taxes, period.
Especially those businesses with a lot of equipment or personal property.
Yes. And so, we'll, but it'll shift, you'll pay more variety of taxes, but less total taxes coming into the city.
That's the goal. Certainly of the legislature.
Yeah. It's kind of shifting the burden a little bit away from the businesses and to the individual citizens, whether that's right or wrong, but that's the impact.
It's a big shift in ideology.
Yeah.
Matt, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Kind of continuing, what I want to do is tee up the food and beverage presentation before we recess the council meeting for the public hearing. I wanted to give some background information on the food and beverage tax. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there's, you know, we're not doing this haphazardly. We're doing it because we need to, but I wanted to give you a description of kind of the plans and why this is, this is critical. The food and beverage tax is a 1% sales tax. It's added to your food and drink purchases in certain places. So, if you're a retail merchant selling food or beverages, you're already collecting sales tax. You would collect a 1% food and beverage tax that would still be remitted to department revenue in the normal course, and then that would be distributed to the city of Madison from the Department of Revenue. As you can see here, if you're going out to eat, it's going to apply. Food and beverage is served in restaurants, bars, cafes, catered events, food trucks, prepared or heated food, so at grocery stores. So, all of these vendors here are paying a retail sales tax. They would add the 1% in for the collection of the, of the food and beverage tax. There are some exempt sales, and if they're exempt from the collection of the sales tax, you would be exempt from collecting the food and beverage tax, too. As an example, minimal impact is, if you have a $100 restaurant bill, it's a dollar. If you're going out for lunch, it's 15 cents on a $15 meal. Everybody can do the math. It's, it's, it's a fairer way, since it's a consumption tax, to expand who pays it rather than the burden for your local government always being kind of borne on one, one class. Here, it's, and that class would be property owners. Here, it's spread out. If, we heard a lot of comments at the last meeting about how unfair it is that people drive on our roads, but they don't live in Madison, so therefore they don't, they wouldn't have to pay a wheel tax. You don't have that situation here. If you're dining... If you're dining or consuming a food and beverage in Madison, you're paying your fair share along the way. And as I mentioned, visitors contribute. We have a very robust tourism industry, contributes about $60 million or so to our local economy, and about one-third of this, of our food and beverage economy in Madison is through the purchase by visitors. So this is something as well where the burden of the food and beverage tax isn't borne just by those people who live here, but if you're coming through here visiting, and as our tourism continues to grow in Madison, you know, we continue to implement our destination plans with our partners, then that cost is shared. The investment stays here local, but the capital from the visitors comes from everywhere. As I mentioned, it's collected and remitted to the department revenue. Why are we considering this now and how much will it generate? Well, Matt gave, I think, a pretty good summary of what's been going on this past year, and candidly, it's been happening for the last couple of years. We've been getting a lot of signals from our state legislature about changes legislatively that's going to affect local government. And it prompts us to do a lot of research. As you know, I'm on the AMES, grateful to be on AMES State Legislative Committee, so we're in front of the legislature a lot, and we're crafting policy solutions to legislatures to try to minimize the impact on local government. But we're considering this now because the landscape is shifting. We know that we're going to have a significant loss of revenue over the course of the next five years, and that's going to compound, but yet we know that there is a tremendous impact from deferred investments in Madison that we have to plan for. And I'm going to go through a little bit of the capital planning here in a minute as well. And the thing I like about the food and beverage tax is that it's designated on how it can be used. It can't just be absorbed into operational costs. It has to be reinvested back into the community for parks, economic development, and tourism-related expenditures and investments. And we have a tremendous need for that. Matt talked a little bit about some of the awards. We're very proud of our community. The beauty of our community doesn't happen by accident. It happens with intentional planning and support. What we've been, I think, really exceptional at is taking our dollars and leveraging them up to get a tremendous return on that investment. If we're putting a million dollars in, we'll turn something into $10 million. Sunrise, Redson and Sunrise Crossing, and Sunrise Crossing is a good example. The city invested $5 million in that mixed-use development. It's a $55 million worth of private investment that's happening there. It would not happen if we weren't willing and had the resources to make investments like that, and I could give you several examples. So parks is a big one where it is instrumental to the quality of life for the city of Madison, but we have tremendous deferred investment in parks that we have to address. And then, you know, while the revenue can fluctuate depending on the food and beverage sales, Department of Revenue, who's been working with us on this, estimates it would generate about $700,000 per year. That would then be worked through our budget and appropriated by council, and about a third of that is coming from visitors to our community. I do want to talk about the capital planning. Is there another slide there? Is there the one with the cities in it? There we go. We're talking about, not everybody can do this. Not everybody, you know, has the legal authority to adopt a food and beverage tax. Not every community wants to do it because they don't have to make the tourism and parks investments per capita. We have one of the largest park systems in the entire state. We have millions of visitors to our community. We have 5 million cars pass this intersection here every year. Tremendous needs. But what I have there is just a representation of existing communities with a food and beverage tax, and there are about 26 there, and some go all the way back to the late 90s. Many adopted their food and beverage tax in 2005. We might be 20 years late to the table with this, but I think the timing is good. But on the right-hand column, it's who was recently authorized by the governor, and that's what it takes right now. You have to have approval by Governor Braun in order to enable this legislation locally. And there's a dozen communities who got the authority from Governor Braun, including Madison this year. And so the comparison I want to make here is that, you know, for the last 30 years, there was about 25 or 26. And then starting in 2026, there's going to be almost 50% more communities adopt this. So while we believe this is necessary and the timing is important for Madison, every community across the state of Indiana has to digest these changes and create plans to, so that they can do what we're saying that we need to do, which is provide essential services and make investments in our community. The last slide, or if there's a slide before that, capital planning and funding sources. This, I just wanted to depict for council and the community that the way state budgets are formulated, they don't give you extra money to spend millions of dollars on a treatment plant or your water facility or the 100 miles of roads and sidewalks, or the tens of millions of dollars it might take for your parks. They give you a few hundred thousand dollars of extra money a year if you want to set it aside, right? And so what we're doing here is saying that if we're going to make capital investments a priority in the future, we've got to have designated sources. We have to go out and identify what those designated revenue sources are. And there's 10 primary reasons why capital planning is so important. It's parks and recreation, streets and sidewalks, facilities. The city hall they're sitting in now has not had any renovation, serious renovation done in 30 years. We just replaced a 1979 air conditioner. Utilities, we're just wrapping up a $12 million water project, but there's more to do with water and sewer. Stormwater, if we want to solve the crooked creek flooding problem and also improve stormwater management across the city, that's going to take investment. Public safety, that's a lot of things. That's your lighting, that's your safe sidewalks, ADA accessibility, your police cars, your fire trucks, your guns, your tasers, your bulletproof vests, your training. It's a lot, there's a tremendous, we spend probably 50% of our budget just on public safety. Aviation, if you have a, if you're going to be a successful community, you have to have a transportation network. We have our own railroad, our own regional airport, our river port, a very broad transportation network. Housing, we're having lots of conversations right now about the lack of investment in housing over the course of the last 30 years. We have a choice. We can make it 30 more years, but I don't want to do that, and I don't think the community wants to do that either. Main Street, we have a beautiful Main Street, greatest American Main Street in the country, but it's not cheap to maintain Main Street. Half of our, half of our crosswalks and curb cuts are not ADA accessible. The road transfer from 2014 that we're working on now, that's at a minimum $30 million investment. It's not a paving project. When you, when you get into a road that's of half a century old, that has not had any modernization done on it in a long time. And placemaking, you know, what do we do to make our community and the quality of life here enjoyable for those residents, those visitors, businesses to invest, people to come to our community, stay here? Those are about the 10 categories I just wanted to share with council of why we need to really focus on the capital investments and make choices because those, that's the future. I'll just use this as an anecdote and then I'll, we'll move on, but this morning, or this afternoon, I spoke at a luncheon with Ivy Tech and Hanover College students about the internships they were doing with the local businesses and how do we, how do we attract, how do we create an attractive community for them to want to stay here? And then right before council meeting, I went to the Liddy Milton Elementary School open house because my grandson is starting kindergarten. We have to be investing in their futures, not just ours, but theirs. And to invest properly for the future of Madison, you've got to have a much longer view. And we are being asked now to make the sacrifices so that that future for them can be better and brighter, but it's going to take a lot of investment, which is why we're not just throwing these things out because nobody wants to pass the tax. The word tax is horrible, but we've also got a local government that we want to be the best that it can be. Included in the information that was also online was an FAQ about the food and beverage tax. You can look at that, you can look at this material. And then tonight, we're not making any decisions on the food and beverage, but we will have a recess here in a minute for the public hearing. That was an overview. Counsel, if you have any questions on the overview, I'll be happy to answer those now or we can defer those until we get to the first reading of the ordinance. Now, I'd like to recess the regular council meeting and call to order the public hearing regarding Madison food and beverage tax. We do have a sign-in sheet. If you just came in, if you've not had an opportunity to sign for the public hearing, we'd ask you to do that now. And then the way this will work is we'll invite anybody who'd like to come and address council in the mayor's office and make your statement with regards to the food and beverage tax.
And that sign-in sheet is just like an attendance, like who's here?
It's an attendance, not a speaking sheet. We will ask those who come to make remarks to be concise, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have as well. Last call for remarks for the public hearing regarding the Madison food and beverage tax. We will be talking, we will be discussing the ordinance, but please give your remarks about the food and beverage, name and address, please.
I just have two questions. Karen Skilman, 1505 Michigan Road. Will the, when you make a purchase with food and beverage, does that line have its own line item that shows the 1% tax, like on a restaurant receipt?
We're going to be working through that with the businesses on point-of-sale, but yes, it would, it's intended that it would be separately identifiable.
And it will show?
Yes.
And then to say-
Because there isn't an 8% sales tax, but it should show the sales tax and the local tax.
On the same line?
No, I believe it's two lines.
Two lines.
Yes.
I would think it would be two lines.
And most of businesses use point-of-sale, so it's easily captured.
Okay. And I didn't hear whether grocery stores will be charging this tax.
Only if they're selling prepared food.
And alcohol or what kind of beverages?
If they're being served. So if you go to the grocery store and you're buying something off the shelf, that's not subject to it. If you're being served a Coke or alcoholic beverage at a bar-
At the-
Yeah, or at a restaurant.
So it's an on-premises tax?
Yeah, on-premises, yes.
Okay, that's all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Bob Hartsch, 806 West Second Street. I had a question on the dispersment of the funds. If we have 10 principal areas for capital investment, why does the ordinance specify, I think there were three or four specific areas which would limit what this council or future councils could do with those funds?
Yep. Sorry to confuse you. I was just trying to give an overview of the capital planning process and the separate funding sources, but on that diagram up there, you'll see two that are highlighted that says they're eligible for funding from the food and beverage tax. There's only three areas in which this revenue can be utilized and appropriated by council, and it's parks, economic development, and tourism. So many of those items up there where I say streets, facilities, utilities, or stormwater, you won't be able to use this tax for that. It'll be appropriated through the budget process, and it has to comply with the law on how the money's being utilized.
That's fine. That wasn't clear to me.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, so thank you and sorry.
Yeah, and that's in the state statute, and again, it's also about, okay, if you're going to do this, return those investments to your community. I think that's a logical thing. Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Okay, we'll adjourn the public hearing at 6:20, and we will reconvene the regular council meeting, and I'll ask our council here to introduce ordinance 2025-13.
This is ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Madison, Indiana, adopting a 1% food and beverage tax, establishing food and beverage tax receipt fund. Sir, any further comment from the council?
We've had a lot of discussion today, the last several meetings, over the cuts coming down from the state and what we can do to replace that money. And I guess I'm kind of disappointed in a room full of Republican elected officials. The one thing that hasn't come up is efficiencies and budget cuts. I wish alongside these proposed taxes would have also come a concurrent proposal of budget cuts for the rest of the year. We can't tax our way out of the cuts coming down from Indianapolis. Legally, we don't have the authority to do so, to make up that money, so that's got to come from somewhere. The wheel tax is being proposed, that's being discussed separately, but this food and beverage tax, the use of it, for me, if it was intended to be restricted only for parks, I believe it would be an easier sell to the public. It would be a more responsible use of the money. But when you start getting into vague descriptions of economic development and tourism, I find it difficult to ask everyone who lives here to contribute even more to economic development, to tourism, when we already have other mechanisms for funding those needs in this community through our TIF district, through our bed tax, other taxes that are specifically in line for funding those sorts of things. And the Indiana code that established this ability for us to have this food and beverage tax, it also allows these funds to be used as the pledge of money for bonds, leases, and other obligations. So it would enable more borrowing, more spending in the future, and I don't believe this tax, as it's presented, is in the best interest of our community. Thank you.
See, and I feel like we, as a council, will be able to direct those funds, as you said, if we want them to go to parks, you know, we don't have to do it. And tourism, I think we get a say-so on where that goes. What I personally do like about, the side I like about it is everyone has been saying at our last couple of meetings, like you mentioned, about, you know, how about all the tourists that come to town, how about they pay it? Well, like, my mother is never going to pay this tax because she never goes out to eat. So it's going to cost my mom this much money. Myself, who enjoys going out to eat, yeah, I'm going to pay it, but that's because I'm lazy and don't want to cook. I mean, so I feel like this is a way to pass some of that burden on to the people that come, and it's really, it's a user-based fee, so only people that go out to eat will be affected by this. I mean, as far as the average citizen. Obviously, the businesses, you know, they're going to be affected, too, because they'll pay the 1%, but really, it's still, it's the people eating that pay this. So that's what I like about it, and the fact that we could, as you said, direct it where we want the money to go, I think we have that option.
I think, too, that it's unfair to say we haven't, we have no plans for reduction in costs. Our budget meetings are next week, and we'll be spending a lot of time talking about where we can reduce our expenditures as well as implementing revenues, creative revenues to bring us to a better place. But there's so much unpredictability, as the AIM representative stated, that, you know, to put that burden solely on us, a lot of the onus is on state government. State government needs to be able to offer more solutions to problems instead of presenting problems and tell people to figure it out. So food and beverage was a tax that was talked about about 15 or 20- So, um, food and beverage, uh, was a tax that was talked about about 15 or 20 years ago, but nobody spent much time on it to, like, what has been done the last, how long have you been spending time on this, the last few months? And, and it's interesting, the list of the people who, the, um, different communities who have already implemented this, some way back in 1995, and how successful they've been with that, I, I don't know, but I'd like to find out. But from the names listed, there's, they have had good growth, smart growth, um, and that's what Madison needs. We need to continue on a, on a good path for smart solutions to big problems. And I don't think we're being irresponsible at all.
I'd just say, since we were evoked kind of as a body, there's a fine line between principles and platitudes, and that line's execution. I would like to work with you directly, Patrick, to, you know, to figure that out up to this point. We've kind of been in a vacuum, but I think that there are interesting ideas and concepts, but for me, the way I visualize things, I got to see, you know, how it works through and how to work through it. So I would look forward to, to doing that with you and, you know, going back and forth with it.
Anything from the audience on the ordinance 2025-13 on the food and beverage?
I just have a quick question, a clarification. Um, I'm Colleen Burdette, I live at 705 East Second Street. The mayor said that we have the three places that these food and tax can be spent, support parks, economic development, and tourism. And then Ms. Krebs, you said we, the council can decide where this money goes. Which is it? Within those three, or you can just decide wherever?
Yet, because we haven't adopted it. But I'm just saying, we would all have a say-so.
It goes through the budget process.
Right, and we haven't done our budget yet for this year.
Okay, so it wouldn't just be used to support parks, economic development, and-
It still has to go into those three years, but-
Okay.
Patrick's point was, you know, it should go into, like you said, if we, if we were saying it would all go into parks, then he would be a little more supportive-
Right. Well, my confusion was when you said you can decide where it went. I didn't-
Okay, sorry, yes, it still is limited to those three areas.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just close by, by saying this, that it's, it's not a Republican or Democrat thing. Uh, you just look at the last 30 years, and we're here now because some of these decisions weren't implemented. We have an opportunity, but we also have a choice. And, uh, you know, I don't think, uh, having an R behind your name means that you're not going to make proper investments in your community because you just want to cut. And you've never met a city yet that's cut its way into prosperity. What they do is plan and lead, and we have choices. We're going to collaborate on this. This is going to go through an appropriations process. I look forward to sharing with you guys all the work that we have yet to do, uh, over the next five years, and all the work that we've done over the course of the last five or six and, and 10 years there, to produce results. But we have a choice, but it's not, it's not a political one. Uh, we're not gaining any political favors by doing this. What we're trying to do is improve the quality of life in our community. That's what leadership is. Thanks.
Now, just to-
Anything else, uh, before we move on to-
Just, just to clarify, I, I wasn't insinuating that, um, we only cut, we cut, cut, cut. I think there needs to be a responsible plan behind the introduction of new taxes to correspond also with cuts to our budget. And I've seen a lot of, frankly, in my opinion, wasteful spending in the city over our last-
I'd love to have that list from you, and we'll get through that in the budget process.
Yeah, we will, we will. But I'm, I'm, I'm still speaking, so I don't like to be interrupted. Thank you. Forget it, thank you.
I would just say that this goes into effect if adopted, January of 2026. So over the course of the next, uh, three to four months, we will be working through our 2026 budget. But if it's not adopted, you know, it's, it's going to make that budget conversation much different. Thank you.
Patrick, um, I just wanted to say, I've had several discussions with several people about meeting, um, um, making the cuts where we can and being responsible and still be able to meet the needs of our constituents, as well as creative revenue sources, which I, the cut, they both go hand in hand.
Yeah, I, I agree completely, yeah.
You can't, you can't implement these things and not look at how you're spending and be as responsible as possible. So I agree with you.
Thank you, yeah, I, I agree. I, I think it would have been nice to see more cuts for this year and also have that presented hand in hand with, with this, as we're being asked to, to enact and levy new taxes before we even have a discussion of, of where we can pull back on our budget, where, where appropriate cuts can be made and responsible cuts.
I agree with you on that, Patrick, not to belabor this, I entirely do. I think that everyone gets their head wrapped around the axle with taxes, but it's really how representative is that tax to the community? And, and what is the outcome of that tax? So again, I look forward to seeing more and having that discussion.
Okay, that moves on to second reading at our next meeting. And the next one is resolution number 2025-12C, a resolution of the common council of the city of Madison, Indiana, transferring certain appropriations between departments within the same fund. And, uh, that is transferring, looks like Sunrise Labor-
Is, is our clerk going to present that, or are you going to present that?
Mindy, do you mind kind of doing that?
So we are, uh, there's actually three, and I want to make sure you have the updated copy. Uh, you don't have four on there, correct? You have three, perfect. So Sunrise Labor, um, we're moving $10,000 into their repair and parts. They have had a host of equipment that's been breaking down. They've been limping along and buying parts and making it, um, through the summer, but, um, they need more funding to help keep that up. Lit police training, um, that's a $5,200 transfer because I believe, um, there were bills submitted in an unappropriated line because they didn't realize that we had appropriated funds in a different line for that, so we're just going to cover it. And CCD maintenance and repair, um, I think there were two invoices submitted at the same time which sent that line negative, so we're just clearing it out for, uh, the cost of flowers and planters and landscaping.
So I want to make sure that the people in the audience understand, like, when we do a budget, obviously, we're guestimating on, you know, every year we try to guestimate based on how much we spent the year before, and sometimes we're off a little bit. So all of this money is appropriated in these same exact funds. It's just in the, within the police budget, this one spent a little bit too much and this one didn't spend all there. So we're just borrowing within the same department. We're not taking from someone else and giving to another group. It's all within the same area. So we didn't know that four mowers were going to blow up at Sunrise. So Sunrise had some money in another little line, and we're just taking it from there so that he can fix his mowers.
Correct, thank you.
Is there anything else from the council on this? Anything from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, I guess it moves on to second reading.
What's the resolution, so we can-
Oh, it is a resolution, right. Yes, vote.
Do we have, square motion?
Do I need to make a motion?
Yeah, you need to make a motion.
I would move that we would approve resolution 2025-12C.
Now, second. Okay.
Now, roll call, right?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Patrick Tevinale?
Yes.
Carla Krebs?
Yes.
Lucy D'Atillo?
Yes.
Josh Schaefer?
Yes.
Joel Storm?
Yes.
Jim Bartlett?
Yes.
And Josh Wilber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, are there any reports, recommendations, or other business from standing or select committees of the council? Are you done? We will, uh, give a Main Street overview that we presented to Board of Public Works yesterday. As you know, we are, uh, underway with regard to the first part of our Main Street reconstruction, so Tony Steinhardt and Chris Hale are here to give an overview to council about that. And this information is also on the city Madison website for the Main Street project.
Well, good evening, council. Uh, it's a, a great day to be talking about, uh, re-envisioning Main Street. Um, Mindy, if you can hit the first slide. Um, this has started, uh, almost 11 years ago, uh, with the transfer of Main Street as negotiated, um, to get the bridge approach, uh, built and, uh, for the, the new bridge. Um, we have gone through a, a number of planning sessions and iterations within community discussions. Uh, in 2021, we had the Main Street master plan process that was, uh, very well, uh, publicized. Uh, there was 75 people, a business and residents from downtown, as well as through the community on that steering committee. A number of open houses were held on that. Um, as well, in 2021, there was, uh, some traffic calming, uh, and some regulations that you passed, uh, by not allowing, uh, tractor trailers in, uh, through traffic in downtown, which I think have made, uh, some tremendous, uh, impacts on the quality of life, as well as extending the life of the roadway. Uh, we, uh, did some remediation, uh, back at that time to help extend the life of that roadway while we, uh, raised the dollars necessary through, through a number of means. Um, and you will see on there a number of awards. Uh, we have been awarded $17 million in the last, uh, four years, uh, from the federal highway for reconstruction of Main Street. Uh, some $600,000 awards have come from NDOT for safety grants that will make improvements to crosswalks and traffic signals. Uh, we have received a $1.5 million CCMG grant, um, and will have invested close to $4.5 million once all of these phases that were starting this week, uh, complete, for a total of investment of around $25 million, uh, for these, uh, first phases. Um, we do believe, uh, the, the phase between, uh, Broadway and Jefferson Street, which is the most expensive phase, as you can think through that, it's, it is our central business district, the heart of our Main Street, uh, with the most needs for, uh, infrastructure repair and replacement. Uh, the last time, uh, much was done to that road was in 1990 with an ICE-T grant, uh, and that, uh, those, those improvements are starting to, to wear down and fail. And so, uh, we will be working on a funding strategy for that by starting, applying for federal grants again, uh, this fall when that cycle reopens for the, uh, Broadway to Jefferson Street. Next slide. So as you can see on this map, um, and I'll try to explain that, the, the green on the map, uh, is areas that we will be working on this fall. Those are, that's primarily the west end of our community, from Craigmont Street to the west. And then the orange area there, uh, is the area that we will be concentrating on, um, here, starting this week, and Chris will go into more details from Mill to Broadway. Uh, and then the three blue dots are the traffic signals that will be, uh, replaced starting next spring. Um, and then, uh, the red, or the maroon color on there, fuchsia, maybe? I don't know, I'm not very good with colors. Matches your, uh, your shirt there. Uh, will be, will be the first phase of reconstruction, which will be Hanover Hill, uh, from the top of the hill to, uh, the McIntyre Street, which is basically the railroad bridge, and that will be let in the spring of 2026 for construction. I, I will spend a little bit, I don't think we have, the, yes, I do have the west end stuff in here, I do have. Next slide, next slide, yeah, yeah. So, the west end gateway, traffic safety improvements, um, we have listened, uh, to a number of the public, uh, we have listened to our counselors that represent those districts, and we're making a number of improvements this year, uh, to that area. Uh, one, to slow people down, uh, we know speed is a huge issue on the west end. Uh, we will be bringing a proposal to you to reduce speed sooner. Um, we've had, uh, concerns, and the state has concerns, at Clifton Falls State Park's South Gate, uh, when those, uh, long, busy weekends, there's a hill there that people crest over, and if you're parked in a line of cars trying to get into Clifton, it can be very, very scary. So we're going to be work, working to reduce some speeds, uh, from, uh, virtually the IKEC entrance into downtown, which will start to slow people down before the bridge, which is currently where the speed is reduced. The engineers feel that, as well as narrowing the lanes visually, uh, will do that. And as you can remember, this was a state highway designed to state highway standards, not a local road designed to, to local road standards. So as you start to come around and you hit that bridge with the wide shoulders, you feel like you're on a much busier, much bigger road. In reality, you aren't, and so a human nature takes over with the foot on the pedal, and before long, you're going faster than you're supposed to be. So, um, next slide, we'll be doing some things through this district that will be narrowing those wide lanes, uh, as you come into downtown with the red, red line. Uh, we'll also be adding some signaling, uh, on the west end, uh, with some speed, speed notifications, uh, as well as doing some quality of life, uh, next slide, some quality of life enhancements for our visitors and residents. We'll be adding sidewalks, lighting, and some signage, welcoming people, uh, to downtown as a part of that. Next slide. And again, uh, the sidewalks will go on the north side from, um, the, the, currently from about the church, uh, there, or the old, uh, ironworks building, which the sidewalks stop roughly there, all the way through to the new trailhead, uh, just past the bridge. We are working with the county currently, um, on, on the bridge component, which that bridge will be replaced in '27, uh, resurfaced, sorry, not replaced, resurfaced in '27, and as a part of that, uh, the sidewalks to the bridge, uh, will be added at that time, uh, through that county, uh, contract. Um, so by the time the west end's complete here, uh, in, uh, summer of '27, fall of '27, it'll be a, a virtually a new roadway with active pedestrian pass, uh, from Hanover to McIntyre Street, uh, all new surfaces-
Hanover Hill.
I mean, Hanover Hill. Uh, all new surfacings, as well as, uh, traffic calming and pedestrian, uh, safety measures.
Tony, will that, uh, support bicycles, um, on the, the sidewalk or somewhere in that area? Narrow it?
Uh, it, it will be, uh, bicycles, it will be share the road, um, with bikes, I would assume. Uh, currently, our ordinance is not allow bicycles on sidewalks.
I didn't, I know it don't, that doesn't, but I'm just making sure how, how bicyclists will-
Well, they'll have the trail as well, so the trail will, will connect, as it normally does, to Clifton Falls at that point. Now for the exciting part.
Yes, so now that we got Tony out of the way, um, we wanted to give you a little more detail about Broadway to Mill Street, um, beginning this week, um, weather permitting, obviously, right? So we've put out some more information. Uh, we'll start by talking about Main and Vine. So, uh, that will be the first intersection that they will start at, right? Or actually, I'm sorry, we're going to start at Elm, so that's out of order, but Main and Vine will be, this is the first rendering that was proposed for that, so you'll see these have the bump outs, right? So they'll start, they'll work from each intersection back towards the west to the previous intersection, so they'll work west towards Mill, then they'll jump ahead and work back towards Elm, and then they'll jump from Broadway and work back, right? So we put out some information that they'll be doing some street closures for the lay-down yards, basically 30 feet north and south of the intersections, um, and then some brief interruptions as they take the piping across the road. So expect one to two days per block, right? As far as a, um, closure with a short detour, a one-block detour around them. They are going to limit that to one block at a time, so as not to interfere with traffic in the sidewalks too much. Um, they also make sure that those are open during the, the main festivals that we've targeted with the most people in town. Right? Um, next slide. So as part of that, um, as part of our, um, as part of the Main Street study and the parking study that was completed, um, back in 2021, 22, um, two of the main areas that were called out was striping for the blocks north and south of Main Street, along with golf cart parking opportunities at the corners. If you'll notice, there's a lot of golf carts taking up full parking spaces, so we've taken the opportunity to put, um, golf carts at the corners. This is not a great example of that just because, um, some of the, the, as you're on north of Main at Vine, there's a little bit of some garage doors that interfere on the one side, but you will see on the south side, um, at the corner, there's some golf cart parking, and you'll see that consistent as we move down Main Street.
Uh, real, real quick, for that, those, um, parking, uh, changes there, are those going to be striped on the streets?
Yes, so they'll be striped, uh, one block north and south of Main Street as part of the project. We will obviously only be paving, uh, a short distance north and south, but-
So the, the, the change- So the 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 change, I'm just familiar with Vine Street from family living there. On the, I guess it'd be the west side going from currently angled to parallel parking there, the the slope of the road and the height of the curbs there makes that a real challenge for getting your car like actually off the road and up if you're going to be proposing that. Have you spoken with anybody who lives there or on the the one down below, is that Elm Street?
No, but it was the south of Main.
Yeah, this is. Oh, south of Main, okay. So I mean, I just, I failed to see, I mean, with the current angle parking on both sides of Vine, why the the change? It takes away a lot of parking spots that that people currently use?
So the problem that we have when you have angled parking on both sides of a street like that is with longer vehicles, there's not always a clear path to get through there. So by going angled parking one side and parallel parking the other, you allow more room to pass through there.
Without, I mean, you know, Vine Street particularly, without rebuilding those curbs and bringing that paving over, having the the parallel parking on that side just seems difficult for the people who live there. And I'm, you know, knowing everybody who lives on that block, I can say I don't, don't think that they're necessarily going to be in favor of that.
So currently.
This will all be field verified, right? Also, because of the width of the spots, the distance as they rebuild and put the bump outs out, that will change the height, especially at the corners of some of those areas.
The corners of Vine and Main are fine, but the further you get back to Third Street, you've got some some very deep storm drains, especially, especially in the west, on the west side of Vine Street. The north side across from the church, those have all been rebuilt with like kind of standard modern height curbs.
Correct.
But on on the west side, you've got, you've got some pretty substantial curbs there that if you were trying to park up against it, I doubt your car door could open.
Yeah, I'd echo those concerns. Every Sunday, we're down there for church, and both sides are full angled parking, even in front of the 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 building with the garage door. Nobody uses that garage door 99% of the time, and so every, every Sunday, that is full of angled parking all the way down, and it is, especially the the far north side there on the northwest side, that is a very steep angle from the road into the curb.
There are some deep gutters there, we would call them, yes. So that's something we can look at a little further. This is the current parking plan to try and gain some consistency across each road, right? So it will have to be field verified, and we will make sure that it's practical, but we are trying to get some consistency on each road north and south of Main Street, and the striping plan will help that as far as showing people what the intent is, because as you said, there's also people that park in places that are not spots pretty often. I know some of the garage doors are not used, some are. There's also, you'll go down there and you'll see some people angled park, some people face park, and.
Striping would be great.
Some are perpendicular, some are backing in, perpendicular, it's all over the board.
So we're, we're trying to bring some consistency, but we will use common sense as we apply that throughout the field verification process, I would say.
Would you, would you be willing to to meet with the people who live on Vine Street on either sides there?
Yeah, certainly.
I'll, I'll get together with you, and I'd like to to run this by the people who live there before you make, make changes like this.
Yeah, we'll be happy to.
Yeah, because like.
We've been meeting with Main Street, all the people that are directly affected too, so we'll be happy to meet with anyone.
I appreciate you trying to get the consistency. I just think in this particular block, with the two churches, it's different than a regular neighborhood.
And Vine, Vine's also a wider street, I believe, than a lot of others.
Slightly wider than some of the other side streets, yes.
It's, it's just haphazard. What we're trying to do is just improve it. It may be a change, but when you've got the cars parking the way they're parking now, you're literally trying to snake your way through up to Third Street, and if there's better suggestions on how to do it, we're open to it. We're trying to put together a plan that creates a little organization, because what's happening now just isn't, it just isn't organized very well. It's not safe either.
Yeah, I would, you know, of course, I live right close to it. So, you know, certainly when churches are in session and people are parked angled on both sides, there's really no way to get two cars through. The other option, you could think about is to make it a one-way street. If you want to keep angles on that street to make it a one-way, and then you don't have the two cars trying to to cross. So that's an option that you might want to look at if you want to keep the angles to it, because I think you have both, if you've got people parked angles on both, you're not gonna, it's not wide enough.
Maybe, and I think that would also, with the layout of the angles, the striping would is always going to be a big help. I mean, it's cleaned up West Street big time through there, but.
Yes, but you do not have enough lane width if you angled park both sides for two cars to pass each other. Now, I get that if both of them use common sense, they'll kind of cheat the middle and go around each other, but when we're trying to lay this out, we're trying to get some standardization and maintain a minimum lane width to allow that, right?
That's fair, yeah, yeah. But I'll, I'll follow up with you about scheduling with the the neighbors there, and the curbs through that, especially on Vine Street, I think are, if if the parallel stays on that side, it's going to be something that needs to be looked at fairly quickly just because of the the height there.
We'll be happy to give this. All right, so Main and Elm, same basic principle as far as the rendering, the intention of the bump outs, same basic parking, which is, you know, the south of Main, anything that's not Broadway would be angled parking east and parallel parking on the the west. Anything north of Main would be angled parking on the west and basically the opposite, right? So trying to keep some consistency there everywhere that's not Broadway. At Broadway, obviously, things are a little different with the road divided and the way it's currently laid out, and Broadway is a very important intersection for our town, so there's a little more emphasis, obviously, on the, I would say, the planer beds, the the corners at Broadway, also the parking. So the parking on, also a note would be there would be bollards installed. You'll see the black dots to the north side of the road of Main. Those would provide bollards for closures, frequent closures around the fountain, Farmer's Market, I think those kind of things where normally we put the barricades out. These would be drop-in bollards in the street, and those were sponsored by the Jefferson County Tourism. They helped to fund those, and that'll help us as far as ease of setup and safety along Main Street for the pedestrians that are using, say, Farmer's Market or any other event that's closed there.
Those would only be on the Main Street side, not on the Third Street side?
For now.
For now.
Yeah, that that would be a future project. We were able to do this as part of the Main Street project, but the intent would be eventually to do them on the Third Street side.
Well, I think we received a JCBT grant to install bollards in the other spots on on Broadway between Main and Third.
Yeah, it just won't be a part of this project, right? But that will be coming. The intent is to be able to do that at both ends. Here you'll see the the parking, again, just standardization, striping. This one's not, not a change to what we're currently seeing. You've got angled parking on the outsides, parallel parking on the inside. We do believe that the addition of the golf cart parking so that you don't have golf carts taking up a full parking spot, and the addition of the striping will provide additional parking opportunities, just because you, you tend to keep people more organized, right? So it will give extra opportunities for that.
So this might be outside the scope of the Main Street project, but on Broadway, two and three blocks from Main Street, people, when there's a events especially, park sides, middle, and.
Everywhere, yes. I've been down there frequently.
Yeah, there is room in the middle for people to do that, and they make generally good judgments about how to park, and most of the time, it's in proper places, but there is no striping, obviously. Has there been any consideration of extending striping down further?
So not as a part of this project? I think that's a fair question that we can work together to address. Striping is not free, but it's obviously not something that is as expensive as paving, so I think there are opportunities there, yes. Any other questions on the parking on there or about the overall project? We do expect them to start sometime later this week. You'll see they've started staging, they're putting out cones, waiting for a delivery of materials, then we'll start in full. The Main Street page is live. People are welcome to come in and ask questions. We'll be happy to come out and meet with them. There will be field issues that we'll have to address, but we'll be here to work with anybody who has a concern. Thank you.
Chris, could the two of you and Tony just describe, I think we're having some groundbreakings for the the trail, the Madison Hanover Trail, as well as the kicking off finally our Main Street project?
Yes, I can. I would just say that between Chris and myself and others, we have met with as many of the residents and businesses throughout this affected area as as possible, especially those who are having impacts. So there's been lots of attention played to communication. If any of your citizens in those zones have questions, feel free to reach out. We can be more than happy to meet with them. We've, we've met with several. Madison Main Street is being very helpful with communications as well, and working with Hannah here in our, in our City Hall to coordinate that and give a weekly update. They have a number of easings that go out to a number of their, their constituents, so we're trying, trying our best. We know there will be inconvenience. The good news is, is Clifton Drive is about done, so hopefully we'll start as soon as that's complete. As the mayor asked, August 14th at 11:00 a.m., we will have the groundbreaking for the first phase of the Madison Hanover Connector Trail, which goes currently, will go from Second Street to Clifton Falls State Park entrance. We will have representatives from the Indiana Department of Natural Resources here, as well as others, Heritage Trail and others for that groundbreaking. It will be held at the, the current parking lot there off of, I think McIntyre, is that McIntyre? Yeah, McIntyre. So feel free to be there at 11 o'clock on the 14th. And then August 20th, a week later, roughly, Wednesday, August 20th, at 11:00 a.m., we will do a Main Street groundbreaking for the much anticipated Main Street project, and that will be at 11:00 a.m. at Main and, Main and Broadway.
What was the date on that?
The 20th.
At 11.
At 11:00. Main and Broadway.
Been a long time since we did the ribbon cutting for the new bridge approach. Anybody remember that?
It was during COVID, right?
Yeah, and and now we're doing finally the groundbreaking on the first part of, first part of the reconstruction of Main Street. By the time it's all said and done, it will probably be 15 to 18 years project. It's incredible.
Chris or Mindy, if you make sure we, you send that presentation out to everybody, that'd be great.
We do have two bills on second reading. I'll turn it back over to Joe.
Next bill on second reading is ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Madison, Indiana imposing a municipal motor vehicles license, excise, surtax, and municipal wheel tax. Are there any comments on this ordinance?
We're speaking on the ordinance. If you come up to address the mayor and council, please give your name and address and your remarks, please.
I'm Andy Crabtree, owner of Clifton Garden Center here in Clifton Drive, Madison. Bob makes it very difficult to come here and talk to the council, but he's presented the whys, very transparent, and an excellent job of why he's asking for these taxes. But I, as a taxpayer, need to say no new taxes. Governments always look at taxpayers to get more money, and at some point, there has to be no new taxes. Joel, am I in District 5? Okay. Did you receive my text or email this week?
Just ask you to hit your microphone, Joel, if you don't mind. Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, thank you.
So my apologies there.
Okay, well, you probably have a better excuse or reason than most. Thank you.
Sure. But if you would like to get together and talk through it more.
Well, my concern is the rushing of this wheel tax. It's down for the, the grant money by August 31st. It's put a lot of pressure on you. How many council members actually heard from some of your taxpayers this week on the wheel tax? Worry?
I've heard, actually, I've heard positive comments on it.
Okay.
And, and frankly, the reason is because it provides us an opportunity to replace revenue that will be lost as a result of the state's actions.
I understand the whys. It's been presented beautifully. Okay, and and I have no qualms or questions with the whys, but at some point, there has to be no new taxes.
I, I agree with you, but when, how do we understand when that point is? You know, I, I agree with you entirely, but can you give me something where it's like there's something definitive, you know, that's hard to, you know?
It is, but that's, you're on that side of the podium.
Sure.
Okay. Joel, if you say yes to a new wheel tax, you're saying it for you and I, our families, our kids, and for generations beyond. It won't ever go away, right? So if we don't say, as a concerned taxpayer, if we don't say no now, then when can we say no?
I'm not sure if it would never go away, and I'm not disagreeing with you. However, when I was talking it out with Mayor Courtney while I was gone, I was opposed to this, because I'm in line with you. To what degree do we stop doing this madness? You know, ounces equal pounds, pounds equal pain. So you put a little pebble in someone's backpack enough times, it gets pretty heavy, and I think that's what most people are feeling. Where I'm trying to ascertain it is, if the tax gives us the ability to do a price match to get the necessary roads, then that's where it becomes valuable to me. So if we, through this tax, $40, whatever it is a year, in the aggregate allows the state to match those funds or go beyond that, we no longer have to figure out how are we going to still have to improve the roads with our own money? So it's, it's kind of a, there is somewhere in the middle, we got to figure out, is it worth to raise 200 random numbers?
68,000.
Sure, 68,000. Is it worth it to get 68,000 in order to receive a quarter million? Or, or we don't spend 68,000, and perhaps we can raise 100,000. But, but, but then it becomes, where do we take, take that? The fungibility of the money is the hard part of this job, right? It'll make your head spin, and I don't think anybody in this room is stupid. I think it tells a story, and we all interpret that story a different way. And so when I try to figure it out, I want to make sure that I'm on the same page. And, and just right now, I, I don't understand, when do we stop that? I agree with you, and we definitely do, but for this, I haven't been able to rationalize that based on what we would receive to maintain the roads.
The matching grant, I mean, that's almost like extortion to this committee.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
Is that even legal? I asked our city attorney, is that even legal to basically put extortion to this council?
It's, it's fairly common where they say you have to be enrolled in certain things or to do certain things in order to be eligible for certain grants. I mean, you can say that you're, you know, you don't want to, certainly, it's a choice, but I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think the state legislature's done anything illegal here. It's just whether or not you agree with it.
Okay.
I, I would like to speak more, especially if you want to stop by my shop or or anything, because there are certain constraints that aren't as public where we have to figure out how to make those decisions. It's a dilemma.
The ordinance 2025-11 establishes a vehicle surtax and. The ordinance 2025-11 establishes a vehicle surtax and a wheel tax. Is this two taxes?
It's two different classes of vehicles. So the vehicles get the wheel tax, $25, and semis and other commercial vehicles, large trailers, get the surtax, excise tax.
Okay, so the surtax, that's the reason it was never even discussed?
They're tied together by state statute. You can't pass one without passing the other, but the people kind of tend to lump them under the wheel tax terminology, but it is two separate Indiana code sections and two separate tax names for the different classes of vehicles.
Well.
Any one vehicle only pays one tax, not two taxes. But if you have multiple vehicles...
Okay, but I knew there was an "and," which made the wording look like it was two taxes, basically two classifications.
Yes.
Bob, our mayor, you make it hard to come in here and say no new tax, but as a small business and a concerned taxpayer, I say no new tax. I spoke to several of my customers as they come in. 99% are not even aware of it. The Madison Courier printed it, however, it's like a part-time paper. Some people are like myself, very computer illiterate, so social media and those avenues are not real accessible. So enough time for the concerned taxpayers in Madison, I don't believe, has been given for this, for it to be read the second time, or the August 31st deadline is even fair to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
And sir, if I may, I can assure you that there is not a single person up here on this counter who likes new taxes. I can assure you, none of us like it. We pay the same taxes, so we're well aware of them. But we have to balance the needs of the city with what's not coming back to us that we've been living with. And, you know, where do we, how do we solve those problems? How do we, how do we correct the road problems that we need the cash to be able to fix? Because nothing's free.
I don't disagree with that, but I know there's, every government, right now, there is, there's monies, okay? Do more with less, be more productive, but there has to come a point that no more new taxes. So I don't know where to start. But how many, how many people would have to contact you, Jim, and say, I don't want the wheel tax for you to vote no on the wheel tax?
And I can't give you a flat number there.
There's 10,000 that they use as the figure. So how many people would have to call you and say, as my city council representative, I want you to vote no for you to do that?
Once again, I can't give you a flat number. The reality is, while it is a new tax, it's not new money to Madison, it's replacing what we're losing.
I could chime in with that concept, too. You know, when you're talking about, one mathematical mind could say, like, so many deviations, right? Standard deviations of citizens. That would be the accurate representation. Whereas you could also argue principled leadership. Whether you reelect me or not is irrelevant to me. I want to do the best I can every time under the principles I have that guide me. It's not, obviously, hopefully, that aligns, right? Perfectly. And I try to study those principles and apply them, and that, there's no winning. But that's why they're principles. What it comes down to is understanding how you can collaborate with people who disagree with you and find something in the middle where you have a true solution. I'm not sure if there are any constraints that allow us to alter this. My question to you would be, since you put a time base on it, what would be a reasonable way to measure a timeframe in which we could either get you, A, more information, or B, find out how to change a result? I'm not sure if there is a result that we can change with this being, coming down from the state, but is it information or, you know what I mean?
I follow you, but like I said, I don't think the 30 days is long enough for Madison's taxpayers to understand what's getting, getting put in place.
Would it be, I'm not being cheeky here either, you know, there would be 60, 90, you know what I mean? How?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, but I really strongly feel 30 days is not enough.
Okay.
Now, as far as the why and the presentation, you couldn't ask for better.
Sure, sure.
Bar charts, experts, Senate Bill 1, this is why we need to generate revenue? That's perfect. Strongest presentation, period. So, I mean, that's not the problem, but the taxpayer is getting that information, understanding that information, 30 or 40 days just doesn't seem like enough time.
But we're all, we're all citizens. We're on this side, too, not to make this a mea culpa, but sometimes we're tasked with, you know, less than that, you know, to try to come up with it. I think with the community and information, whether you're savvy with it or not, or the access, and I do apologize for the email again for that. I try to be as accessible as possible. But I think, you know, being able to consult directly with a council member, a representative, being able to go into the city, being able to ask those questions, there's a certain onus if we put on our community that that will actually raise the standard in which we will hold and which will allow us to make those decisions in timely manners without having to kind of not understand how many people we get on board in so many days. You know, timing is huge with a lot of this stuff. And I'm only pushing back because it's a great time to speak, you know, about it. That's it.
And I mean, the timing's rough right now. The city's got a lot going on. I mean, there's a lot going on. And the state saying, here's this grant money, only if you do this, to me, is 100% not right.
I agree.
Once a tax is set, and it says 25% here, this goes there, this goes there, and this goes there, and it's law, how can they change the disparate of that monies to where it goes? Whether it be the local government or wherever?
Well, they can and they do. Well, they can and they do. That's why we're kind of in some predicaments, too, with the bill, because they are changing law. We had a pre-existing income taxes, right, that were helping subsidize cost, and then all of a sudden, hey, by the way, we're going to change some of these things up where the state budgets or the city budgets for years in advance, some of the things we speak about, you know, are five-year, 10-year, 20-year plans, whereas now you have an administration every so many years that can and does, you know, for better or worse, changes the whole delta, the whole trajectory of that. And so whether it's taxes or not, its agility is what we need. We need speed, because if we can't move something with sheer strength of a, we'll call strength, the amount of money we have, then our ability to make those dollars work is our ability to pivot and have the agility to maneuver around, because we don't live in a vacuum. Madison lives in, is in a county, within a state, within a country, within the world, and all the world's problems, you know, permeate down into small communities, and not so much vice versa. But that's some of the complexity. That's some of the complexity that I look at when trying to understand that, is truly agility. And that's why I push back with the timing, is because that's one thing that we could have as, you know, a stacked Republican seat. If we get it together and we kind of band with this and figure this out, we have enough ability to, even if it's a wrong decision, to pivot off that and continue to work it to the right way. And that's really how I see it. But that's just me. You know what I mean?
But there comes a time, and right now, as a concerned taxpayer, I say no new wheel tax.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a remark with regard to this ordinance?
I would like to.
Come in, please.
I'm Carol Ann Rogers, 934 West Main Street. If I understand correctly, there are other counties in the state that have already started this program. Is that correct?
This wheel tax has been around for probably decades, and I think the emphasis here is that with the strong encouragement from the Senate Bill 1 and our legislatures, there's hundreds of cities and counties that will be adopting this across the state.
Okay. Okay. And if that's the case, why are we just now hearing about it and deciding this is what we need to do? Because now it's only given our community a little over 30 days to even think about it, even if, when he asks you all, has anybody called you about this? I think the reason that maybe you haven't gotten calls is that people don't know it exists. As he pointed out, the newspaper is maybe or maybe not. If you're not on internet, they don't hear about it. They don't hear about it. They're hearing about it from me, and I'm not necessarily objecting to the whole premise, but I'm objecting to the point that you all brought this up last month, and now all of a sudden, we got to hurry and do this. And it seems like we need to kind of ponder over these kind of things, because how did you decide for one thing that it's going to be $40 instead of $100 a car?
Let me give you a little background. So the governor signed Senate Bill into law in May, right? So just about, you know, May-June, less than 90 days ago. This is very complicated things that have to be evaluated to see how it, what the impact of Senate Bill 1 is going to be to begin with, and then what are the solutions? The state dictates the timing. The state also dictates the class of vehicles which are subject to these wheel taxes, and they also dictate the amounts. So they, it turns us then to analyze it, discuss it, share it. We have a two-reading process, so it does happen in a 30-day period. It's been talked, I mean, we use all medium, whether it's the paper or social media, public meetings, to get the word out so that we can get public input. And we have had lots of comments and emails about it, some for and some for against. But the state dictates the schedule. Now, we could make a choice, which is, let's just wait until 2027. Let's just wait and see what happens next year. We're trying to be proactive, knowing that with the issues, we also gave a presentation at the last council meeting of the financial impact from Senate Bill 1. There's still a lot to learn over the course of the next five years as that gets implemented, but there's also a lot of things that are known now, which is why we need to act and we need to do it in the construct of the law. Just doesn't fit tidy in a lot of timing, unfortunately, but if we don't do this and have everything fully implemented by September the 1st, now we're looking at 2027, which is also going to be a very difficult year for us, because that's when the current form of local income tax gets abolished. Okay? So that's why we keep talking about the next several years are going to be very difficult with lots of hard decisions, lots of analytics, and figuring out a path forward. This is one of those things. The food and beverage is one of those things. The local income tax in 2027 is going to be one of those things. The legislative process that will start again in January, that just, you know, concluded after five months, is going to also be one of those things. So there's so many elements of it, and we're doing the best we can for the benefit of Madison. And then, you know, I'll just mention this, because Andy brought it up, is that we're elected to represent our community and to take these facts and this information and make the best decision possible, and also listen to the input of our constituents. But we're also representing everybody, everybody here as well, Carol.
Okay.
Through that process.
Well, so how did you decide on the $40? Why not 100? Why not 10?
The state sets the amounts. So what you can do is, there's a minimum and a maximum.
Okay.
And for passenger vehicles, I believe it was, let's just say it's $7.50, no more than $25.
Okay.
And then for large trucks and trailers, it's $5 minimum and $40 maximum. We also collected the information, unless I got that reversed, but we also collected the information from the BMV relative to what types of vehicles we have that are registered here in Madison, Indiana. And then that became part of the analytics to compare that to what is our road rating inventory, what is the rating of our inventory now, and how much investment needs to happen. We could, if we choose to, take 30 years. We could take 30 years to try to get our current road inventory up to average. I can tell you, over the course of the next 15 years, there's a compression effect. As we're investing in new roads, those ratings hit higher, right? As you're ignoring the current inventory of the roads, those ratings get lower, and it's a compression effect. And so we just have to make the choice, are we going to make an investment annually and what amounts? And then are we also looking for grants? We've received tens of millions of dollars of grants to help offset the $30 million cost of the Main Street project. So we're out there exhaustively looking for resources to minimize the impact on our local residents.
Okay. Is this just...
Anyway, so I'll win an answer, but I'm just trying to give you as much background and happy to talk about it later, too.
I see. Is this only for the city or for the entire county?
The city of Madison will adopt its wheel taxes, and Jefferson County has to decide if it's going to do the same. And I don't know what they're doing now.
Okay. So if I have six vehicles that I may drive at any one time, do I have to do them all?
If you have a registered vehicle, then you would have, the tax would apply on all of your registered vehicles, regardless of how often you drive each one. There's no way of knowing which one you're driving, so to speak.
Well, I mean, do you also tax people who would rent cars? Do they have to pay it on it? Or the leased cars?
If there's a car that's registered in the city of Madison, it would be assessed, this wheel tax.
Okay, but if I lease a car from Lexus in Louisville, do I have to register it here and pay that 40 bucks?
It's only for cars that are owned and registered here in Madison. So if you live here and you have a vehicle, regardless of where you bought it from, but you register it in Madison, it would be subject to the wheel tax.
Okay, but it's a leased car, it doesn't matter.
If you're buying the registration, you pay the tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do car lots have to, do you tax their cars?
That's not, you know, within the disordance. I don't know what car lots do. I don't believe so, since they're for sale, but they probably pay a personal property inventory tax, is my guess.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Any other remarks on ordinance 2025-11? Any other public comment? No, we'll close public comment on that ordinance.
And we will do a roll call vote.
Patrick Tevinow.
Yes.
Carla Krebs.
Yes.
Lucy DiTillo.
Yes.
Josh Shaper.
Yes.
Joel Storm.
Yes.
Jim Bartlet.
Yes.
Josh Wilber.
Yes.
Last ordinance on the agenda is ordinance number 2025-12, and that involves the rezoning of 3515-plus Michigan, Michigan Road. Is there any comment from the council or the public as it pertains to ordinance 2025-12? Seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Patrick Tevinow.
Yes.
Carla Krebs.
I'm recusing myself because of a bias with a family member that is affected by this.
Okay. Lucy DiTillo.
Yes.
Josh Shaper.
Yes.
Joel Storm.
Yes.
Jim Bartlet.
Yes.
Josh Wilber.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Moving on, we'll go to public comments. I think Councilwoman Krebs, you have the sign-up sheet.
Yes, we just have two. Sandy Palmer. Okay.
Sandy Palmer, one oh five East, I don't even know where I live. Did this, yeah, third. Just a quick question. The four-point-nine-million-dollar bond that was approved earlier this year was, it's clarification, was a matching funds that would be used for the projects, like for projects that you've gone over, that were all, some of them were ready, ready-approved things? Is that correct, that that's what that four-point-nine-million bond was for? And is that money, I mean, the ready funds have to be spent on the projects that were approved, is what I'm assuming.
You are correct.
The bond is, is not committed to anything?
The bond was issued and closed, so the proceeds have been, the net proceeds have been received. Council authorized, or I should say approved, the redevelopment commission's authorization of the bonds. The redevelopment commission has a redevelopment plan and establishes the use of the bond proceeds, and we outlined those at that, at that council meeting.
And so are those committed to specific things already? I'm, I know, I heard what the word you said, but I don't know if I understood what you said.
We committed them to the two ready projects, the park project, and I think there was one, and then the, and then the other housing development.
Right. So if, for some reason, a project did not go through for the ready funds, you would still have the money in the redevelopment world?
And the redevelopment commission would direct where that goes.
Ready, okay. And it would be money to be used for economic development?
Yes.
All right.
Consistent with the approved redevelopment plan. So there's, there's checks and balances there.
But it's not specifically set for something, I mean, within those guidelines?
It is now. And then I think what your question is, if something doesn't go through, yes, those proceeds would be re-appropriated to a different project.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Hartson, you already spoke, did you want to speak again?
No, I had my question answered.
Okay.
But I would suggest maybe looking at the use of funds in the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hartson, you may come to the podium again.
Do you want to come up to the, just so everybody can hear it?
Thank you very much. No, I had my questions answered, I appreciate it, but I would recommend maybe clarifying the use of funds in the food and beverage tax, so that's a little bit clearer. I think there are three specific listings there, possibly phrasing that according to state statute or something to clarify that, so there's no confusion down the road. It's up to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Here now, we'll just move on. I don't have a whole lot to add. Thanks, Tony and Chris, for making the presentation earlier. August is an extremely busy month, we have quite a bit going on in the community. Just ask for patience on finishing up Clifton, starting Main Street, and very excited about these, these new infrastructure projects. They are not only functional infrastructure projects, but their placemaking that enhances our quality of life. And we're having lots of discussions about what's our future is like, but I think we all agree Madison is unparalleled with regard to its quality of life, but it takes investment to keep that going. And I'm happy to serve with my fellow, fellow councilman here and represent the community, and a lot more conversations to come. Counsel, anything that you would like to add from the bench?
Yes, I want to clarify, Mr. Hartson. I want to make sure I understood your question. You're saying if and when the food and beverage is passed, if that happens, you would like a more detailed report of where we're going to spend that money?
It's, it's not quite clear. It could be referred to per state statute.
Okay, so you do understand the three areas that we have to spin it in, you would just like more details? Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
That we adjourn the meeting?
I will second that.
Thanks, everyone.